Select Board, Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our community prayer from Select Men Denham.
Oh mighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all our citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness of joy in life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. We now reach the point in the meeting for citizen participation. We reserve 10 minutes at the start of every meeting for any citizens that would like to address the board. To do so, we ask that you confine your comments to about three minutes so that we can allow other people the opportunity to speak. Were there any citizens that wanted to address the board this evening? Yes, sir. Will you state your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Mike Palmieri. I live at 164 Plymouth Street, Carver. Members of the Select Board, in the spring of early summer, spring and early summer of 2017, I noticed that a filter building related in regard to the North Carver landfill behind my property was not working. After many phone calls, starting with the number on the signage attached to the building and EPA file number, I ended up speaking to a person at Mass DEP. I told her of my concern, the filter house had not been working for a while. She said she would look into it. I also, at that time, approached the town as well. I was told the town had shut it down for various reasons, and DPA was aware of this. The next time I spoke to DEP, I was told, no, they had not been signed, they had not signed off on this issue. Bear with me. Since then, I'm a little leery of communicating about this. While looking into this filter house issue, I was also told around that time of the detection of 1.1,4 dioxane in test wells around the North Carver landfill. I was told by the town later, I learned it was also found in private wells. At this time, nothing was discussed to mitigate the issue, nor was I made aware of the extent. Some months later, while following up on the water issue, I was told by town that a plan was being looked into to provide bottled water temporarily until the funds were made available at town meeting to extend the water line from its end point up Plymouth Street to Pine City. At that time, I asked the town to provide copies of all well test reports here on out. They said they would do that. At the 2018 town meeting warrant, Article 3, Item C, DEP water line extension due to the North Carver landfill, recommendation by the Select Board was five to zero to approve it. Recommendation by the Finance Committee was seven to one to approve it. It passed a town meeting without too much discussion, as I recall. A year later, the town decided to defund the water line extension. The 2019 town meeting warrant, Article 3, relocation, reallocation of funds for the police station. At town meeting 2018, Article 5, the library, $1,100,000 were put to the police station instead of the library HVAC article. ATM 2018, Article 3, DEP water line extension, $300,000, which was funded at the 2018 town meeting. That was recommended by the Select Board, five to nothing to recommend this, and the Finance Committee, six to nothing to recommend this article. I strongly feel the Select Board needs to be more informed, engaged in this public health issue. My wife and I were not told of this by the town, nor were any of my affected neighbors. I was told by an acquaintance in a passing remark after the town warrant was written. None of us affected by the 1.4 dioxane issue were kept in the loop. My neighbors found out from me after I found out from this encounter from a friend. Since then, the water stipend has not been automatic or consistently on a timely schedule. We have to go to Town Hall and ask the town to process this stipend check. It's belittling and it's upsetting to my family and to one of my other neighbors. We should all get the agreed upon amount of timely, in a timely manner. I also was not getting a well sample report, as I had asked back in 2017. On 7/3/2019, we had a meeting at Town Hall to discuss the 1.14 dioxane contamination. Present were my wife and I, residents of 162 and 165 Plymouth Street, and two people from the town. It was slightly heated at times at the meeting, some but not, some but not all inclusive topics were. The defunding in the water line, the explanation was not satisfactory to my wife and I. The continuation of bottled water was discussed. Quarterly testing for the next six to seven quarters, we've currently completed about one, I think, one quarter of that. A meeting with line to testing was discussed, that has not happened. Stated I had asked for well test results from a few years back, wasn't getting them. I'm asking again, was told I would get them. I think I did get one once since then. And I apologize if I run over my time. It's the only time I've had to address this issue where it belongs. Have a follow-up meeting after first quarter, first few quarters of testing, we haven't reached that yet. My wife and I left the meeting feeling disappointed and very angry. When we hear that the town, when we hear what the town recalls in their conversation versus what I hear DPE recalls with the conversation between the two, it rolls apart. Sadly, we don't believe the town at this point, version, or trust it. A few timeline issues I'd like to discuss also. The first detection of 1.4 dioxane that I am aware of through looking at records of it was at my private well in November 2013, and I was never made aware of this. 2013, a test well for the North Carver landfill, remember, I was not made aware of this issue in regard to this 1.4 dioxane until December 2017. That also occurred and was detected in November 2013. In December 2016, the North Carver landfill well, well number MW-21M on my property, 175 feet away from my drinking well, was tested, and that level was, I believe, .54 something, okay? And I think the cutoff is .3. I was never made aware of that when that occurred. Since then, let me back up. I was made aware of that when I approached the town in 2017, that there's been an issue, but I was not aware of that test or the results. It was never made public to me. Since then, it has shown up in private wells at 162 Plymouth Street on 12318, 164 Plymouth Street, my home, at the same date, 12318, and at 165 Plymouth Street, June 2018, not reported to DEP until 9/10/2018. I'm sure it was just a clariflera. In a summary report by the town consultant between May 2017 and July 2019, 22 test samples were tested, were taken at six private wells and one test well that was, that is located on my property. 1.4 dioxane was detected in five of these samples. And when I say that, it was highlighted and on that chart that it's detectable, that they can measure it. It wasn't way down in the low scale, .1 something. If you figure that out, that's 23% of those samples taken over that period of time tested positive for 1.4 dioxane. If you extrapolate that out for the 750 days of that timeframe, it comes out to approximately 187 times it would be detected if you tested it on a daily basis. You can extrapolate that further to November 2013, when I, that I can find that this issue was brought to light by somebody. My twin, 10 and a half year old granddaughters have been living, lived with us for seven years and were exposed to 1.4 dioxane that we had no knowledge about. For a practical purpose, we can't sell our house because we have to disclose this debacle of 1.4 dioxane. It makes our house unsellable. Would you buy it? Nor can my neighbors, for that matter. I don't think, this whole well water contamination issue saddens me, disgusts me, and it angers me. The town had the opportunity to do the right thing and they didn't do it. They had voted for the funds for fiscal year 2018, and they reneged on it. Would you like to come to my house and have a nice glass of ice cold water? Or for that matter, would you like to buy my home at this stage of the game with this Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I hope the five members of the Select Board will consider what I've said and doing the right thing, move forward, and fix this problem by extending the water main on Plymouth Street to where you said you would. I look forward to comments and feedbacks at a later time. Sincerely, Mike Palmieri. I'm going to give you five copies of this letter. I'm going to hand it to Mr. Belt, okay? And I'd like every member to get a copy, because no one can ever say you didn't get a copy from me.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody else want to address the board this evening? Name and address, please.
This is Dan Badger, 165 Plymouth Street. I live across the street from Mike and our other neighbor, John, that's here. My reason I wanted to make a comment tonight is recently there was an article in the Carver Reporter, which I seem to be fairly highlighted in. This particular article was written in response to a letter that I had submitted to the Health Board regarding this water issue. My intent for writing the letter was multifold. One, I wanted to just make sure that the Board of Health and I were on the same page in terms of understanding what really the issue was and seeing if that lined up with discussions that I've had with Angela Gallagher, who is the person, my point of contact, our point of contact with the DEP. The letter, the intent of the letter was to recognize the history that Mr. Palmieri laid out and also to acknowledge that when we collectively asked for more testing, that was accommodated. But in addition to that, I wanted to express that while I am appreciative of the town stepping forward and offering water assistance to alleviate some of our concerns as it pertained to the 1.4 dioxane, that I think everybody in the various meetings that we had agreed that that is a short-term solution. And my question at the end was, while I wanted to be appreciative of and to keep everybody talking, keep the dialogue going, it was a polite letter. And I want, I think I also wrote that, was inspired to write that, because in social media, there's been a lot of, a lot of nasty grams, I guess you could say, back and forth. Some of the, many of the comments missing facts and focusing on feelings. And the purpose of my letter was to, as it was semi-quoted in the Carver Reporter, that I wanted to mitigate drama, although I would say that the last part of my sentence was cut off in that I wanted to mitigate drama from the issue and focus on the empirical data, as it was not just presented to, from, to us from the town and not only presented from the engineering firm that was doing the testing, but also the DEP that sets the standards for what is considered safe drinking water. And so, the summary of my letter was, this has been great, this has been reactive to the issue at hand. There's a lot of debate as to who said what and when. My concern is that there's been a lot of energy put into finger pointing as to procedure of who said what and when and who's going to get fined and sued and things like that. But through all that dialogue and all that drama, we haven't discussed what the long-term solution is going to be for the water line itself, if it is going to be a water line or if it is going to be a new well sunk or if we are going to have to figure out a way to live elsewhere. All those things have not been discussed at all. Maybe they were addressed in previous years, but then due to financial issues with the town, all that, there, you can, you can go back and forth on the why and the where in the past. My concern for myself, my family, my neighbors is what is the plan moving forward? And is there a dialogue to even discuss that plan? What is the timeline of that plan? And I think that was the intent, well, you know, I'm sure it was not intended, but there are some areas where I may have been misquoted. But the main thing is that I wanted to mitigate all the talk and back and forth, people speaking on my behalf without my, my saying it's okay to speak for me. I wanted to, I guess, put my name out there, and that's why I wrote the letter, because, you know, I'm one of those three residents. And I know a little bit about water filtration and that area, and I, while the standard for 1.4 dioxane currently is below what DEP considers safe for, safe drinking water levels, there are new standards that are being, being brought to bear with other contaminants. The other suggestion I had to the DEP and, and, and no disrespect to Mr. Malinowski or the Board of Health, but nobody, nobody there are experts in water filtration. I'm sure that they know a lot more about water filtration than they did four and five years ago in the course of all this process. But again, that is why I'm not really concerned about the history, I'm concerned about the future. And if, if there could be a constructive dialogue with that, that's what I care about in terms of making this problem not go away, not to create headaches for all five of you or the town or to sound like a complainer. That is what that article makes particularly me and us sound like, is that we're just complaining because we don't like it and we don't feel like we're being heard, et cetera, et cetera. And those, those feelings aren't, shouldn't be dismissed, of course. But I can't, I can't worry about how I feel about this. I need to worry about what is actually going to take place in terms of an actual solution for this problem, which is not a small problem. And I guess I'll, I'll leave it there. The rest is going to sound like a rant if I went further on, but thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Someone say something? Sorry. All right, moving on, at this point, the intent is, we had an Executive Board session specifically on this topic prior to tonight's meeting. We have attorney Greg Corbo here from our KP Law, and he is going to provide a brief update on where we stand on this particular issue, and hopefully it will be addressing some of the concerns that were raised during citizen participation.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name is Greg Corbo from Town Council's office at KP Law. I'd just like to start, preface my remarks by thanking the residents for coming forward during citizen participation and, you know, to make it clear that as we move forward in this process, the health, safety, and welfare of the residents is of paramount concern. And, you know, we are working together, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, the Town Administrator, the Town's licensed site professionals, and DEP to try to reach a permanent resolution of this matter. That being said, this is a matter that is currently pending an administrative process before DEP, so there are certain parameters that we must abide by in making public statements. So I've prepared a brief summary of where we've been to date and where I think things are heading. This is by no means a complete and comprehensive summary, but at least should be able to shed some light for members of the public as to where things currently stand. So to begin with, this matter involves the North Carver landfill that was closed in the late 1980s and has not been used as a landfill since then. However, under DEP regulations, the town is required to continue monitoring for potential contamination that may come from the landfill. And the town has done this monitoring consistently since the late 1980s. As a result of this monitoring, as well as detailed analysis of experts who are licensed site professionals, these are individuals who are trained to perform this type of analysis and who act essentially as agents of DEP in monitoring former landfill sites. They've been able to map the direction of groundwater flow from the landfill site and have, have determined and mapped a limited area of impact that has warranted additional testing over time. So from, from time to time, this monitoring has revealed the existence of low levels of certain contaminants of concern in this area, which has triggered more extensive monitoring and response. Particularly between 1993 and 2017, the town operated a water filtration system to prevent further migration of any of these chemicals, and the town had previously extended the public water supply to a portion of this area. The treatment system turned out to be highly effective, but regulatory standards for acceptable drinking water continue to change. And in particular, the DEP has recently recognized as what they call an emerging contaminant, a chemical called 1.4 dioxin. This is a contaminant that has been detected in monitoring wells at the landfill site, but because its effects are not yet fully known either by DEP or the EPA, the levels of acceptable drinking water standards for this chemical continue to evolve to this date. So we do know that 1.4 dioxin is known to be present in the groundwater near the landfill, and it's common to be found near former landfill sites. It's also found in many common household products, including cleaning supplies and shampoos, and discharge from onsite septic systems is also known to contribute to the presence of 1.4 dioxin generally. And that's just to explain, you know, where this chemical comes from and what it is. Upon the detection of this chemical, 1.4 dioxin, in monitoring wells, as required by DEP, the town, through its professional consultants, commenced a comprehensive analysis of the groundwater at and around the site to determine the extent of the presence of 1.4 dioxin. This analysis included testing of town-owned monitoring wells, as well as private drinking water wells in the area of concern. Not all private wells were tested at the time, primarily because either properties were not occupied or town staff and professionals could not gain access to the properties at the time the testing was being conducted. 1.4 dioxin, in addition to being detected in monitoring wells, was detected in trace amounts in some of the private drinking water wells, and the town assisted the affected homeowners with additional testing and funding for the purchase of bottled water. To be clear, at no point has, have any of the private wells exceeded the DEP standard for safe drinking water levels. During the course of the program, however, there have been miscommunications between the town's professional and Board of Health staff relative to providing homeowners with information and getting them payments for bottled water. Upon the discovery of the error, the town and its consultants immediately attempted to rectify the situation. The reporting errors, which were reported to DEP by neighbors in the area, were confirmed by DEP, and this led to DEP scheduling an enforcement conference to determine whether the town was in compliance with its obligations under state law. Although DEP has found that neither the town nor its consultants engaged in any intentional violations of the law, and they did not intentionally attempt to deceive DEP or the public, the town and the DEP are continuing to work together to resolve the situation and to develop a more permanent solution for addressing issues relative to the quality of groundwater at and around the site, particularly in light of new testing requirements that we expect to be forthcoming. In the meantime, the town is going to continue to monitor the situation and provide funding for bottled water to affected residents. In the meantime, the town and its consultants are scheduling a public information session to provide the public with a detailed explanation of the situation and what the town is planning to do. Although the effects of the landfill are confined to this limited area of town, all members of public will be invited to attend and present any questions that they may have. We expect that this meeting will be held within the next 60 days, and we will publish the date, time, and location on the town's website. In the meantime, we will continue to work with DEP on a permanent solution to the problem.
The only other thing I'd like to add to that is that, although there's obviously been no formal discussion or vote, is that I believe the board is of one mind that we move forward with designing and planning for the extension down Plymouth Street and to move forward as quickly as possible with the construction. Again, continuing to consult with DEP, but I believe that the board, that there's a consensus that the best solution is to bring town water to the area, and that will be part of what's discussed at the public meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had one quick, I guess, stay there a second, because not on this item, this was just, I just felt obligated after you had posted your dismay at not being able to attend the meeting, the DEP meeting, the just reminder, and we, you know, Bob and I have gone through this a few times, is that as Select Board members, we have authority as Select Board members when we're in session, or if we vote, like had we voted, had you asked the night before, can I want to attend on behalf of the board, we could have empowered you to attend on our behalf. But any Select Board member simply showing up somewhere is, has no greater powers than just a fellow resident unless they've been authorized to act on the board's behalf. So it's just, we've, you know, we've discussed this a few times before, I just think it's important that that be understood.
No, and I understand that, Ron, completely. I guess my issue with that is that- I guess my issue with that is that we were told what times the meeting was going to be, we were told where it was going to be, and there was no discussion that we couldn't be there. And I feel that I represent the residents, and my intent for going there was to simply be there and listen, was not to participate in the meeting. So I just, you know, I felt that it was an appropriate thing for me to do. Like I said, I wasn't planning to discuss anything.
Okay, again, just for...
I felt it was my responsibility.
It's just a reminder to members of the public that we don't have any authority unless we're in session or haven't been empowered to act. I mean, I understand...
Absolutely. I wasn't planning to act on any authority.
And I think in the spirit of what we've talked about with communication, we need to better communicate stuff and make, because I can understand how, based on the way it was described, you felt you could stop by and attend the meeting.
Absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Also, with that, because I would have wanted to go too to that, so for any other meetings with the DEP or whatnot, can I make a motion that Sarah go ahead and be our contact person with that, just to observe the meetings?
I would, I have no problem with that if someone wants to second that.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And I would like, if, given that we have Mr. Corbo here, and he'd like to go home at some point, if, without objection, down lower, we have an update on the CMWRRDD, Unfunded Liabilities, and Propose New Agreement to Have Skeleton Organization, as was voted by the Select Board. I know that Greg needs to, has something to address there, so I'd like to, with the board's permission, move that up on the agenda to take into play now.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we move that line item up to this current time of the meeting.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. So I guess, in what order does this need to be done? Because yours is somewhat related, but not specifically tied to what's here?
Yeah, okay. So, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the board's consideration. So the Carver Marion Wareham Refuge District is in the process of reorganizing. And prior to, I don't know, a few months ago, we were town council to Carver, as well as council to the district, on the issue of certain civil and criminal litigation that is pending. As the members of the district started to discuss reorganization, we had a new member, attorney join our firm, who brought in the town of Marion as a client of the firm. So now, as the parties to this agreement begin to discuss the terms, in order for us to review the agreement on behalf of Carver and Marion, who are now both clients of ours, we need both clients to consent to us representing both clients at the same time. And the reason for that is that, under the rules of professional responsibility, we cannot represent multiple clients if their interests are going to be adverse, or if one client objects to the multiple representation. In this case, as is typical in arrangements like this, we leave the essential business terms to the parties to negotiate amongst themselves, but then we step in and we help prepare the legal terms of an agreement. Not only do I not see our position in that regard as being adverse to either of the parties, but it's typically beneficial because you get an economy of scale there where we're reviewing the agreement on behalf of two parties and splitting that cost amongst the parties. Of course, if at some point the negotiations broke down and the parties could not agree on essential business terms, or if there was some dispute concerning the terms of the agreement, we then would not be able to represent either side. But at this point, I don't see it coming to that. I think we can represent both parties equally without being adverse to the other. So if you consent, we can then go ahead and assist you in drafting that contract, along with assisting Marion at the same time, provided that their Board of Selectmen consents.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Has Marion agreed to this consent yet?
I don't believe it's come before them yet.
Oh, okay, so this will come as news to them also, then?
Well, they've got, I've sent you a written notice of this through the Town Administrator, and a written notice has been sent to them as well. I just don't think it's gotten to them for an actual vote yet.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Greg, what consent would we be agreeing to here tonight? I mean, what exactly is the document you're asking us to consent for you to do for both? Because if it's, you, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, why don't you finish your question?
Well, because we have not voted to leave the district, and I know Marion has, or they've had their first vote on that, and so I would like to be cautious if it has to do with that particular issue.
Well, sure, so, you know, no, we're not going to provide advice as to whether or not you should leave the district. That's, you know, when I reference the business terms, that's what I was talking about. That's for you to decide, you know, based on economics and other factors, whether you want to leave the district. If you decide to leave the district, then we would work on helping both communities prepare an agreement to wind down the district's affairs, you know, to figure out how to distribute its assets and put legal, for lack of a better word, put the legalese behind the business terms that you've agreed to.
Okay, so for example, if Wareham and Carver decided to have an agreement, to have an intermunicipal agreement to essentially keep the thing running, you would then go back to both Carver and Wareham and ask the same question, can I work for both of you to help us write, work on that agreement?
Well, I don't, we don't represent Wareham, so Wareham would have its own council for that, but I think that would be a different situation than this, because that's now you basically having a successor agreement with just Wareham, and I don't think that would affect our relationship with Marion.
How about Wareham, Carver, and Rochester?
As I sit here right now, I don't believe that we represent Rochester.
Okay, I just didn't know.
Mr. Goldman?
So, right now, the district has a lawyer, and we are crafting an agreement, all right, of how to vote, leave the district, all right, which includes funds and money here, there, and everywhere, all right, and our lawyer is crafting this up. What is going to be your role, all right, in this document that we've now created, or are creating and going to be voting on, I think tomorrow, on this document? Are you going to look at this document, or are you actually looking for something else? I don't understand what your role will typically be.
Sure, so in this instance, because the district is, at this point, a separate legal entity, it has counsel that it pays for out of its own budget, and that counsel, my understanding, has drafted a proposed agreement. Typically, your attorneys would also review that agreement to ensure that the terms of that agreement are adequately protective of your interests. So in this case, we would be reviewing those legal terms for both you and Marion.
Have you already got the draft one yet and looked at that already?
We do already have the draft, yes, but we are awaiting your go-ahead before we communicate the results of any review, in case you decide that you don't want us to go forward.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, to me, it just feels premature for us to vote on this. Marion hasn't done anything. We haven't decided to leave the district. We're still working, we've just voted to go to a skeleton committee in the district. We haven't decided whether we're going to try to work on an agreement with Wareham, and it feels like we're giving approval to something that, you know, may not even happen. It would be better if we did it at that point in time.
Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is just to look at, at this point in time, even to look at the agreement that is being drafted by the district, which you would have to look at to make sure it meets, you know, we're not being negatively impacted, to even look at that, you would have to have us, make, allow you to go ahead and do it because of the fact that you also represent Wareham, and I mean Marion, and since they are going to have to be looking at this, because this is just, right now, a document that's being created by the district itself, nothing to do with Marion leaving, us leaving, or anything else, it's a document they're preparing.
I thought you just said, Greg, that you had already seen that document, that the district is preparing.
And just to be clear, the document that's out there is not a document for parties to leave the district. That's not what the document is.
I understand, but Alan's suggesting that in order for Mr. Corbo to look at that document, we would have to take this vote, and that's not what's happening, is it?
Well, I mean, it's, it's not just look at, it's to represent you with respect to reviewing that document.
So this document's going to come back to the three towns, that the district and Bob's going to be voting on this document with the other eight members of the committee, and saying, this document's the new powers and organizational structure of the district going forward, and that has to be ratified by each one of the towns. So assuming that gets voted by the district tomorrow, then we're going to get a document the next day that, when we have our next board meeting, will be proposed to be put onto the next agenda for, I'm sorry, for the next warrant for town meeting. When that document comes in, we need to have a legal opinion on, if town meeting's going to vote on this, does this protect the interest of Carver? This has nothing to do specifically with the district dissolving, or the district partnering with Wareham. This has to do with how the district's going to operate in the future, as the operate that's there.
Mr. Chairman, all right, so this document that was created is really a dissolution of the district as a whole. I just want to bring us back to what we actually voted on, when we really voted. When I brought that motion up, the skeleton, the skeleton committee here that I had brought up was only to look at the unfunded liabilities, all right, and to pay for those. I have an issue here because I don't think that was relayed to other members of the district accurately. During the meeting I was at, a couple of meetings, a motion by Marion was, I move to suspend all operations of Carver Marion Wareham's transfer stations located Benson Brook Road and Marion Route 28 in Rochester effective December 31, 2020, and to immediately begin discussions on disbursements of assets and future liabilities of the district under the existing agreement. In addition, the current board of CMW will immediately initiate discussions when any towns wishing to continue operations in Route 28 Station under a new management agreement effective January 1, 2021. This was Robert Partridge.
Who is, who is Robert Partridge?
He's a representative for Marion, and attached to that, which got passed around, was this other letter here, and it states, gents, to help move things along, the Carver Select Board took a vote last night to recommend to our three appointees that the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District no longer be in the transfer business and be reduced to a skeleton committee after calendar year 2020, with the powers to only include, one, closing and monitoring the existing landfill based on the funds set aside; two, orderly close out the two transfers facilities and using those funds and others to pay all OPEB and pension costs. They also voted to have the district prepay, to the extent possible, the pensions and OPEB exposure. This was attached. I wasn't one of these gents that got this letter.
But I can only tell you that that's my understanding of the vote we took.
No.
No.
I just watched the video today.
If you had asked me, if you had read that to me and said, is that what we did? I would have said yes.
No, it's not what we did.
No. That, well, that might not be the way it was voted, but that, to me, is the way the discussion went and what was intended.
The OPEB part was in there, that's true, but it was to be a skeleton committee...
Right.
And to keep everything functioning.
Well, how do you interpret reducing an organization to a skeleton group, and yet you're going to say it's going to be viably something that's going to go create a new district?
Nothing was mentioned about us being, get out of the transfer business and closing...
Well, again, that takes a town meeting vote to get out of the transfer business.
But that, but he...
But that's not what it says here, that we took that vote.
But we didn't.
That's what it says here, we took this vote.
So who wrote that, that, that gents' letter?
Thoughts, question mark, Michael. Michael R. Malonowski, Town Administrator, Town of Carver, 108 Main Street.
Two of the other two town administrators.
So the two town administrators got this, but it was attached to the motion of Marion's that got passed around.
Getting, getting back to Mr. Corbo's...
Okay.
Getting back to Mr. Corbo for a second, what he's asking is whether or not we would be comfortable that there'd be no conflict of interest with his firm representing both Marion and Carver. That's what's at the bottom line, is do we feel they have the ability to act with, without affecting a conflict of interest on behalf of both towns?
And, Mr. Chair, if I could, you know, based on this conversation, which I was not previously privy to, I mean, if your interests are not aligned with Marion, then we cannot represent both of you. You know, it only works if, you know, everybody is on the same page, and that's not to say that you are necessary adversaries, but if you want something different than they do, I don't know that that's consistent with us representing both, and it might be that both communities are better off if we were to recommend special counsel so that you can, you know, have somebody who is not in any way constrained in the advice that they give you, and I apologize, I was not previously privy to this conversation, and that's why I brought it to you, that's why we ask for your consent before we do anything.
All right, well, I guess that makes it a moot point, I don't think it does. All right, well, thank you for staying this long.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman, Greg wants to talk about the national opioid.
Oh, yeah, national opioid, okay.
Just back to the regular agenda.
Yes, okay.
All right, you're still here, Mr. Corbo.
Still on the clock.
So, as you are aware, we are a member of a consortium of law firms that are pressing claims on behalf of municipalities for expenses associated with responding to the opioid crisis. There are several lawsuits pending throughout the United States, which are set up as class actions, so there's not a lot of individual involvement of each community, but rather they're represented by a consortium. And so this is the report that I have from that consortium. Federal opioid litigation continues to proceed along a number of paths. A negotiation class has been certified as part of the multi-district litigation. Each of the municipalities is part of that class unless it actively sought removal. The negotiation class representatives will seek a negotiated settlement of the cases. While the defendants have appealed to the class certification, it is expected that this process will pressure the defendants towards settlement. At the same time, a number of so-called bellwether cases are proceeding in a variety of venues. With the $260 million settlement with two Ohio counties in October on the eve of trial, these additional trials have been continued. The Ohio cases generated an enormous amount of discovery, which will be useful in future cases. Additionally, attorneys are pursuing the matter of the Purdue bankruptcy, also involving the controlling Sackler family, to determine an appropriate settlement plan. We are limited in our ability to comment, as we are unable to reveal litigation strategy at this time, but we are encouraged by the strength of the cases and the results obtained thus far.
Any questions for the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I believe you are free.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Let's see, wait your turn. We'll now move to an update on the status of the Board of Health regulations for nuisance and removal of the word blighted and adding protection for farmers with a focus on nuisance, and next meeting to reviews, review revised draft. Mr. Ford, would you like to?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I thought that the next thing on our item is, we're not doing the, next thing, oh, okay, never mind, I didn't correct it, we were so late.
I was about to.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Ford, you are the health agent for the Town of Carver, are you?
I'm the Town of Carver. As you know, the Board of Health is currently working on a, currently working on a nuisance bylaw. So last month, at our January meeting, we had, prior to that meeting, we had posted the draft regulation on the website and set up a public forum meeting that we held on January 21st. That was fairly well-attended, I believe there were about 30 people or so. Each one of the people that were there were given an opportunity to make comments. We've taken all of those comments into, you know, into consideration, and basically where we are right now is that I am working on a revised or edited regulation, again, trying to address... again, trying to address the comments that were made. So at, at my next meeting, which is this month, actually it's next week, I'm going to be presenting those, that edited version to the Board of Health. If they're in agreement with the way it's been changed, we're then going to set up a second public forum. We're also going to post that, that edited version on the website so people have an opportunity to review it prior to the meeting, and they'll be invited to our March meeting.
All right, so just to recap, next week, it's not intended to be the public hearing, it's basically for the board to review what you've done.
Correct.
And then, once you've made whatever revisions you're going to make, you'll post that. And then at the March meeting, it'll be another public hearing for people to come to weigh in on it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent. Questions for the board?
It says protection for farmers with a focus on nuisance, and what protections for farmers that regular citizens won't have?
That's still being worked on.
Okay.
Yeah, excuse me if I may, Mr. Chair, yeah, I-
I'm in the process of the edit, so I don't have answers to those questions right now.
As, as much as I fight to protect farmers, I, I'm concerned that that is, you know, targeting up one group, and I'm not sure that that's something we can do.
Well, again, it was one of the concerns that was brought at that public hearing.
It is a concern.
That, you know, this is a right-to-farm community. Most of the comments relative to farming were related to cranberry growers that have derelict equipment that they can have reuse for, whether it be pots or what have you. So, again, that's a work in progress. It'll be available for view, viewing when it's posted up.
No, I understand, I'm just talking about the legality of that might be something that we should check on.
Well, anything that, that I prepare in, in the form of an edit will go to Attorney Corbo for his viewing.
And just, I just want to put this out there, is that I'd rather see this as a town meeting vote instead of a regulation. I think the residents should have a, a say into this because it affects them.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, could you just tell us once again what the public hearing date is?
Our next public hearing, uh-
For this, on this, I just missed the date.
The March meeting?
Oh, the, we don't have a March meeting set up yet.
Okay. But it will be well-advertised.
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have to also agree with Mr. Belvin. I strongly urge that this go before town meeting and not just the regulation.
I agree as well.
That makes four hours, at least.
I'll hold out. I believe the Board of Health is the best expert on this matter. But we're here to agree to disagree on this matter.
Yep.
All right, next, do we have any public safety officials present?
You're all-
And if so, would they like to step up to the microphone?
Come on down.
And identify yourselves and the various roles you play within the Town of Carver. And just a little warning, we're going to be talking about streetlights and the landing strip down Main Street. So-
Lights of Main Street.
So, I don't know which of you is going to-
John Woods.
Begin the discussion. Mr. Woods?
Yes, sir.
Microphone, please, thank you.
Good evening, John Woods, Deputy Director of Operations and Maintenance.
Craig Weston, Fire Chief.
Mark Duffley, Police Chief.
Tom Waltz, EMS Chief and Emergency Management Director.
Please let us know why you're here.
Okay, we're here to discuss the streetlight grant that we, that the town has, has been awarded.
Can you give us an overview of that grant?
Elaine, do you have the figures? I don't have the figures in front of me of, as far as how much we received and how much the town's putting in.
Thirty percent reimbursement, as Elaine just said.
For changing over streetlights?
The current streetlights to LED streetlights.
LED streetlights.
Yep, around 600 of them. Okay.
And EBSO incentives, yep.
It's going to save the town a lot of money and energy, I feel.
How many streetlights does 600 represent within the town?
What do you mean?
I mean, how many, you're doing, do we only have 600 streetlights in the town?
Yeah, there's actually-
Okay, so that's every streetlight being changed over?
Exactly, yes, yep. And we're not adding, we're not taking any off. I feel that all the streetlights that we have right now, we should keep, I don't think any should be taken off the-
That was one of the questions that came up at the last meeting, was whether or not there would be any potential savings by eliminating streetlights for safety, as long as it doesn't affect safety.
No, I, I think that we're going to be getting savings just switching over to the LED. And I know that if a streetlight goes out in town, we get a call immediately. So I think if we take any away, the people, the residents are going to want them back. So my, my opinion is that we keep them all.
Okay. Is, and, and the, we're getting a 30% reimbursement, correct, for this changeover?
We're paying 30%.
Oh, we're paying 30%?
Yeah.
We're paying 30%?
No, Elaine just said no.
No. So we're paying 70% of the cost and getting, and getting, well, we pay 100% and get 30% reimbursement, I take it?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any idea what the overall, is, is this budgeted already?
Yes.
Uh, any, I know that it comes up, there, there are different types of streetlights. There are bright whites, and then there are soft ambers that deliver the same level of coverage, or I guess maybe different lumens, but-
That's correct.
What can you tell us about the ones we're going with?
So the ones we're going with, we're going to have 4,000 lumens on all the main roads, and we're going to have 3,000 lumens on what we call the housing developments, not main roads. It's going to be the same wattage that's out there. What you're seeing out there now is almost a yellowish-brown light, these are going to be a whiter light.
So more similar to what's out in the center of town?
Yes, yep.
What are the lumens out front here?
About 150,000?
I think they're on 4,000.
50,000, that's more like 50,000.
I think, I think 150,000 is closer. We've saved 15 Piper Cubs that have been able to divert in a snowstorm down to the Main Street here.
That's true.
But we'll come to those in a moment. But just to finish this discussion, do you have any sense of how different it will, you know, coverage will, will it be a brighter area, or will it be basically the same area illuminated?
I think, I'm sorry.
Elaine, do we need to move you up, up over here? So when we were asked about this, you're asking us here tonight as far as what are our opinions for public safety, so we've been asked. Whitman switched theirs over to the same scheme that we're talking about, brighter lights on the main streets and lesser lights on the back roads. I took the opportunity to drive up to Whitman and talk with the Whitman Police Chief. And I drove through Whitman, I'm not an expert on streetlights, and I'm not going to pretend to be, but they look appropriate to me in, in my limited capacity as to, in the way what a streetlight should look like. They don't look any worse, or they don't change the, the, the look of the town, in my opinion, but that's just my opinion, that's not based on any expert-
What was the Whitman, what was the Whitman Chief's opinion?
It's the same thing, that they felt that there was no change, there was, there's, you know, you have to get used to it. I think we, we just mentioned the lights out front, how bright they are, and it took a while for people to get used to that, we had some discussions on that earlier. I don't think we're talking about the same type of change, because those lights are very bright and they're very close together. We're talking about streetlights that are very far apart. When, when I was asked to look into this, I did a little bit of research through IACP, which is the International Association of Chisa Police, and there are numerous studies out there. And the one thing that is consistent is, no study proves whether streetlights make it safer or don't make it safer, but they do make people feel more comfortable. And the, the type of lighting, whether it's the yellow-orange glow of high sodium lights like we currently have, or the white light that it's out there today, it's a different light, but it doesn't really affect whether people are safer or not safer. So from a public safety standpoint, changing the lights over to these is not going to have a difference, an effect on public safety, it's going to have a difference on what, what you like. But it is going to save you money, electricity, and make it fit more in your green community, so I think it's a good thing. I do have a picture, I didn't print it out for everybody, that shows in LA where they switched over to them, they've, they've got a street that where they have half with the LED lights and half with the sodium lights like we have now. And you can clearly see the difference in the two type of lights, but I don't think you'll see any appreciable difference as far as that, so, so much of difference, you wouldn't make that change. Anybody wants to take a look at it, you're more than welcome to, but I've looked at the ones in Whitman, and I don't find them to be a big problem at all, I don't think, nor has the Whitman Police Chief.
Would the other chiefs like to weigh in on the topic?
This issue was brought before us at a, at a department head meeting, where our opinion was asked, and both John Woods and Elaine had presented this plan about what type of lights they were going to use on different roadways. I think as public safety officials, we felt that seemed like a reasonable plan, there was really no reason to not do it, a direct replacement, and some thought put into it seemed to make sense. So again, that was discussed, and that was asked of us at that time, so.
Okay.
And that's what we reported at that department in meetings.
So-
I really don't have anything to add.
Well, thank you for taking the microphone to add that.
If I may, Mr. Chair, Chief Weston, I just wanted to ask you if you had a sense of how the new lights would compare to, say, the, the ones at the new fire station, which in my opinion are much nicer than the ones on the runway out here.
So, so I think obviously there's two issues going on here. There, there's an issue of the decorative lights out front, and then we have an issue of streetlights.
Right.
And, and I think we really, you really need to separate them.
Okay.
Just, just in clarification, so, you know, the streetlights that are going on in town, there's 600 and something of them. You know, I, I did a little calculation, it's 110 miles of roadway, you know, it comes up to less than 10% of the actual roadways in town would have a, a streetlight, would have an area of 100 feet maybe, pick, pick your number, that would be affected. So, so I honestly don't think you're going to see that dramatic effect that you might with the decorative lights out front. The lights on the front of the fire station, I did some research before I came, those are a five, a 4,000 lumens light, okay? I can't swear to you that it'll look exactly the same. I don't know what the light, when we switch topics to the decorative lights out front, I really do not know what lumens or calvins those are. So I can't compare the two. Obviously, you can see they look different, but I don't know what they are. So I, I can't, I can tell you what they are on the fire station, I can tell you probably when you put streetlights up around town, they're going to look similar, but they're going to be spaced out more, so they're not as on top of each other. So again, and then, and then you get into the topic of the decorative light.
No, I appreciate that. So the ones at the fires, the new fire station are 4,000 lumens, and, and they're LEDs?
They are LED, and to best of my knowledge, they're 4,000. That's what I could find in the spec when I looked, so, I mean, tried reading 100 pages and trying to find that.
That's great, thank you.
Mr. Belvin? Yeah, so the lights that go on now, they go on, then they shut off at certain times with certain ones. Will these LEDs stay on the whole time, or will they do the same thing, they get to a certain type, a certain time, then they shut down a little bit, cool off?
Yep, they'll do the same thing. They have sensors on them for the daylight, and they'll go off when the, when the sun comes up.
No, no, I meant, like, even when they're, like, there's one down the street that I can watch, and at a certain time, it gets so hot or whatever, it just shuts down?
Okay, no, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have this problem with LEDs.
Okay.
And there's a, they come with, I believe it's a 10-year warranty for each bulb.
Okay. Each bulb's supposed to last 10 years?
Yeah, so we shouldn't have to replace streetlight bulbs like we are now.
And the other thing is, is that there are some residents that have their own private lights on their properties or whatnot. Is there a process to turn around and convert those ones over too, or whatever the cost is to have them pay for that or whatnot?
There's no, there's no plan right now. All the streetlights that were audited were town-owned, and that those will be the only ones that are being switched over.
Okay.
As of right now.
So if a resident has a, a streetlight on their property, it's on their own?
Well, yeah, I couldn't really answer that right now, we don't really have a plan for that, we haven't really, right, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't have anything to do with, if they wanted to do it, yes, then it would be on, it would be on the residents.
All right, so that's, that's the streetlight update, but Sarah and I would be remiss if we did not, while we have our public safety officials here, speak about the landing strip that is the Main Street here. I believe at one time, there was some discussion, and we discovered, I think it was about $6,000, Sarah, I think someone told us to-
3,000.
3,000?
I believe.
I, I thought it was a little-
No, it was six?
It was around 6 to 8,000.
6 to 8,000, okay. So if we switched over to a softer amber light, which if you drive through downtown Plymouth, that's what they have, and it's, and they also have the nice decorative lights around the pole, John, as well, which we discussed before, but that's a separate issue. So while the chiefs are here, I believe that Sarah, maybe you and Dave Robertson sort of met with the chiefs to discuss it, so I'll let you sort of-
Oh, thank, thank you. I don't exactly remember when it was, but I know this, when Dave was still on the board, we had a little subcommittee of our board, and we met with all the chiefs, I don't think Tom, I don't think Tom was there. And, and I think you guys were kind of in agreement, especially during the rain and snow, that, well, I guess, John, you like them in the snow, but the rain, it's really hard to, it's just a big glare for, for a lot of us. And so if I recall correctly, you guys were in agreement about maybe making them less bright, since there are so many and they are so close together, like the chiefs are.
Yeah, I think we did discuss that, but then I think when we saw how much it was going to cost to switch them over, that's why we left them. Be honest with you, Sarah, I haven't had any complaints in the last couple of years that they've been out there. And me personally, when I'm plowing around this area, I like-
I like the runway.
You know, I, I personally, when you're out there doing work at night, whether it's a snowstorm, or even if it is raining, they're just, and for this area, it is helpful out there.
Police and fire, no, no problem with the, the lights down Main Street?
So I, I recall our discussions before, and they are bright, they do look bright, that's, that's my opinion as well, but as, in preparation for the discussion, I emailed all my offices to, or our, our offices to make sure that there were no issues, and I got responses back indicating that we've not had one motor vehicle accident out front, nor had any motor vehicle accidents, when anybody's indicated that the brightness of the lights had anything to do with motor vehicle accidents. So directly relating to public safety, I can't say that the brightness or the glare has caused any public safety problems for us, but still, if it's not something you like, then it's something you could change, but-
If Sarah and I took up a collection and came up with $8,000-
Certainly, that's what I'm saying, we can't blame it, we can't blame car accidents on it, though, or something like that, to, to make that change. It's aesthetically pleasing, change it, but it's not, it's not a public safety issue from a police standpoint.
So neither way would it be a public safety-
Right, whatever, whatever.
That's what I wanted to know, okay, appreciate that.
You've got to find the grant, I guess.
Yeah, a grant.
I really don't care.
Why do you keep taking the microphone?
But, but I will say-
You're just delaying this meeting.
I will say that I think there is some logic to, you have your EMS station here, your police station here, your major fire station here, where this is the place, obviously, where most vehicles do, you know, respond from, and I think having a little extra light out there doesn't hurt anything, and-
So you do have an opinion?
I do not find it offensive at all.
Okay.
I've learned to live with it.
Thank you.
But I don't care.
And yet, you do. Chief Weston, did you want to throw in?
You want to add to that?
I would just say, from a fire standpoint, we bring our lights with us. Whenever we go to a call, we, we go there intending there are going to be no lights, but-
Sarah, starting a GoFundMe page.
You know, we, you know, seriously, we can all have our personal opinions, and, and that, that's fine, I mean, you know, but from a public safety standpoint, I think whatever you choose would be fine. I mean, you know, I don't think it's-
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll give up the ghost at this point, Sarah, till we come up with an alternative.
There you go.
All right, thank you all very much. That's our update on, uh, streetlights. Now we'll turn it over to the Chief of Police. Appointment of Special Police Officers Peter Allegrini and John Banzel for passing the Reserve Academy.
Good evening again, thank you. Tonight I would like to respectfully request that the Select Board appoint two additional
Tonight, I would like to respectfully request that the select board appoint two additional special police officers. As I've discussed before, special police officers bolster the number of officers who are available to work police details, controlling traffic at road construction sites, or providing security at the fair and at Edenville. Special police officers do not work patrol shifts. They must purchase their own uniforms and must maintain their own required yearly in-service training. Special police officers must have a minimum of the Mass. Police Training Council's Reserve Academy for training. Special police officers are not paid full-time officers, but rather receive compensation by working paid details. So there's no cost to the town by appointing special police officers, and we get a benefit by having additional police officers that can work paid details and help provide public safety at traffic and security at the fair and at, at Edenville. Both people on the ring before you tonight, for consideration, have passed criminal background checks conducted by our detectives. And if they're appointed, both will also complete field training with our full-time police officers before being allowed to work details. These two are the, these two would be the first two that we don't have. The, the previous ones have been members of the, of the sheriff's department and such. They're already out there working. These are members that will need a little bit additional training, and we're expanding this program to, to allow other people to come into the program. So we're gonna have to spend a little more time field training them than we did some of the other previous special police officers. Uh, Mr. John Banzel currently works as a paramedic with Brewster Ambulance. He previously worked for Carver EMS for many years, and was a deputy sheriff with the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department. In that capacity, he has done this type of work before. He has completed the MPTC Reserve Officer Com- Academy back in 2010. And Mr. Peter Allegrini is a local businessman and community-oriented person. He just completed the Mass. Police Training Council's Reserve Officer Academy, whereby all reports he excelled. Over the past six years, Peter has donated a great deal of his time and effort toward our community policing events, and helped to make them very successful. Both will make excellent additions to our complement of special police officers, and I would respectfully request that the select board appoint Mr. John Banzel and Mr. Peter Allegrini as Carver special police officers. Any questions?
Uh, will we get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve both officers.
Second. Discussion?
Go ahead.
Oh, I just, you mentioned, um, special police officers providing security. Where would they be providing security?
So either at Edenville or at the fair. That's one of our, traffic details are normal, like Everso is out on the road. When we, when we work the detail at the fair or at Edenville, we're there to provide, in addition to traffic at the fair, uh, Main Street, but also security.
So it wouldn't be at, um, things like election day or things like that? I mean, those would be your regular officers?
Those are just full-time police officers.
Thank you.
Well, no, I just wanna think these are two very, um, good candidates for our town, and with the town for many years. And I'm really happy that they decided to come work for us, uh, in the capacity with the police department. We have a great police department, and they're a great asset. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bellin.
Mr. Townsend? Chief, just, um, just a general question. If you have details down at the fair or, or what have you, and you don't have someone to fill them, where do those details get filled? Do they come to the sheriff's department, or?
So we have, um, we have mutual aid agreements with all the surrounding departments, so sometimes they come from Middleborough or Plumpton or the sheriff's department.
So, so do you find it beneficial to have our own special police officers that we can have to fill those details, rather than having to? Can we train them the way we want? What is the benefit to having our own specials?
Yes. The answer is this. Having police officers with our patch on them, under my command, is always beneficial for my direct command than having police officers from it. We don't have, we haven't any issues, but we have our police officers in our Carver police uniforms that directly respond, report to us, and if there are any issues, we can deal with them appropriately. We've, you know, when, when you, when you work this job, no matter who you are, you'll have, time to time, people not be happy with how you've done the job. That requires us to investigate it and find out what's going on and, and, and make, uh, make corrections to that. When that involves a police officer from another municipality, then we have to do our investigation, then pass it on to another chief, and have them do their investigation. So when we can, if that comes up, when those issues come up, we're better able to handle them if we can handle them right here.
And do you have a number of how many special police officers you would hope to have at some point?
Um, I, I don't at this point. We've only just started this. In the past couple of years, we're only built slowly back up. There was a point in time when Carver had as many as ten special police officers on, if you go back through the books. We don't have that right now. We're, we've, we've cut back. We had, uh, we started with Fred Mello when he retired, and then Sergeant O'Donnell when he retired. Fred Mello's since moved on to live in Tennessee, so he's cut back out. We had, um, Jim Jepson from the sheriff's department. He's not, no longer working with us, so we've, we've added some, and then some have left too. So we're, we're right around five right now, which is a pretty good number. But I still would like to, um, we, we've gone, we've had times when even having access to the sheriff's department and having access to outside police departments, where we haven't been able to fill details. And the problem with that is, um, we can only tell companies that need to work on the road so many times that we don't have the ability to let them work on the road without it being a problem. You know, we have to find a way to do that, whether it's to put a patrol officer out there and do that or not. And that's not something we wanna be doing. I don't have enough patrol officers to do that. So we've kinda gotta make sure that we have that cadre of people ready to go, and we wanna be able to be self-reliant on ourselves, not, uh, not relying on other departments, that if, if they don't have the detailed offices for themselves, they can't, you know, then, then they can't supply them to us. A good example of that is Plymouth, for a very long time, has been an island. They, they, nobody worked in Plymouth, except Plymouth and the sheriff's department. Plymouth's gotten so busy that they now rely very heavily on us to send detailed offices if we have extras. And, and that's great for our guys to keep working, but, um, but it also means, you know, just the same, the same thing's happening in other departments. They're, they're finding it that they can't fill with their own people, and they need to draw on other places. So I think we're, we're better off to build that up now and have some people, uh, that we've trained, that we have under our command, uh, to be able to fill those jobs, to make sure that they can happen, because we can't. It, it still is a public safety issue if we can't have Everso, if we can't have three companies out there working to clear the lines and make sure that's done, because we don't have the police officers to put on the road. So it's, it's my intention to make sure we have enough bodies to be able to carry that out on a, on a daily basis.
Thank you. Mr. Dunham?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I wanna thank both of these gentlemen, even though they're not here, um, for stepping forward to going through, especially up Mr. Allegrini, going through the school, the course he had to go through, and wanting to serve the town. And I fully support, uh, appointing them both as, as special police officers.
Thank you.
I would just add that I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Allegrini about, um, the academy that he went through. And I was absolutely blown away at how exhaustive and meticulous, uh, I mean, basically, these guys are, they're not doing everything that you do in the regular police academy, but it is a large portion of what an officer, if you were sending, hiring a new officer and sending them off to the police academy, they are getting an awful lot of the very same training, uh, just missing a couple of key items that prevents them from being full-time officers. I was absolutely impressed and blown away with what they did. And to hear that Peter did well, uh, by all reports, uh, it's, uh, you know, it's competitive, and so that they're both to be really, um, uh, you know, acknowledged. And, and also they're, um, as, as, just as loyal citizens to wanting to work in their own town is great, so. I will endorse it as well. We've got a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. Those in favor of appointing Peter Allegrini and John Banzel as special police officers, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Chief, thank you. Okay, we move on to our seven forty item. Select board votes. The 2020 state primary warrant. What's the pleasure of the board?
My move, we go ahead and approve the 2020 state primary warrant.
Second. Further discussion? Being none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, uh, we have had an executive session meetings discussing the police chief, fire chief, and finance director contracts. We voted in executive session to agree to those terms. It's requirement of us now to vote in open session for those contracts. Make a motion that we approve those contracts.
Mr. Chair, I would ask, respectfully ask that we do it individually, since there's one I have to recuse myself from.
Okay. Uh, why doesn't someone start us off with the police chiefs? Make a motion that we approve the police chief contract.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion that we approve the fire chief contract.
Mr. Chairman, I go ahead and recuse myself from this one, due to having a family member be a member of the fire department.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Being none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And a motion for the.
My move, we go ahead and approve the finance director contract.
Further discussion?
I just have one, um, with that, is that, um, any future, uh, contracts that we go through, we have both the old contract and the new one.
Provided to us for.
Provided to us, so we can review, uh, in case there are any discrepancies in them.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, resolution to not support House Bill H. thirteen twenty-eight, which I actually don't think it got out of committee, so I don't think it might be an issue for this year, but it could come back, uh, in principle. But basically, it was a bill that would eliminate the twelve-dollar monthly cap on manufactured homes in manufactured housing communities. And I believe we wanna go on record as being opposed to that, uh, and I think we need to keep an eye on it and ask our rep, state representatives to keep an eye on it, to see if it does resurface, uh, in the next legislative year.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do not support House Bill H. one, three, two, eight, or any House bill that would eliminate the twelve-dollar monthly cap on manufactured homes, uh, in manufactured housing communities.
I, I would second that, and I also think that we should send a, a letter, uh, as a board, to our elected representatives, notifying them of that.
I, I concur on this House bill, but I don't think we can make a motion on any bill that hasn't happened yet. I mean, and it's not, that's not on the agenda either, so, but on this bill, I, I concur.
There may be a technical. Alright, Sarah may be technically correct on this issue, Alan.
I was just trying to be proactive.
I understand. So are you willing to.
I'm willing to amend it to just this bill.
Restricted to this thirteen twenty-eight, yes. Then there's been a second?
Second.
For discussion?
Just for discussion purposes, the current, uh, rate that we charge in the town.
Nine.
For this is nine, right?
Nine, yep.
Right, just to let people know. Okay, thank you.
And that, I do, I believe that's set by the, by the select board?
Yes.
Right? So that would, if, if.
We did it a couple of years, two or three years ago.
So I, I think it's worth mentioning at this time that we have no interest in raising that from nine either.
Right.
Correct. Uh, alright, motion made and second. Further discussion being none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that was in favor of not supporting it.
That's correct.
That's correct. Yes, that's in favor of not supporting it. Yes, it gets confusing. Okay, an update and possible vote to support a bill that Susan Williams Gifford sponsored for cranberry growers to keep actively farmed chapter land in sixty-one A while having, uh, an active solar project on the grid, and request provision to have retroactive. Can someone give us a little clarity on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, two weeks ago, the, um, the Board of Assessors had a meeting, um, with, uh, Ms. Dick Ward and Stephen Ward discussing their cranberry bogs. And, uh, I've subsequently have had meetings with, um, high-level folks at DOR. And currently, the regulations state that if a cranberry grower is gonna use the power for their own site, then they can keep the land in chapter sixty-one A, uh, which is similar to many other projects in town when you use it for your own use. However, the background for chapter sixty-one was to preserve, um, farmland, so it stays farmland, didn't turn into housing developments, as well as allowing farmers to continue to, to, you know, farm their property, given that the, um, that they don't make a lot of money. So providing the taxes, um, a subsidy to the taxes was a way of putting that together, and it's a policy done statewide. With that, we now have solar projects. And solar projects, when they go onto a cranberry bog that's under chapter sixty-one, and that solar power is gonna be sold off privately. And keep in mind, we still have a tax agreement on the personal property, which is what solar is, those, those cells, we still get taxes for that. However, because of the way the legislation is currently written, the farmers have to take their land out of chapter sixty-one A. And, and with that, um, that kinda defeats the purpose of, or one of the purposes of sixty-one A, which is to preserve it for, for farmland. And when these growers have the ability of dual-use, being able to farm the cranberries that are there, and/or do dry picking, like Mr. Paddock does, or the wards do, even without the tall dual-use facilities, they can still go out and dry pick their facilities, but they were forced to take them out of chapter sixty-one. In my conversations with DORs, they thought that it was totally appropriate that they should remain in chapter sixty-one, and they actually tried to see if there was a way of making that happen. After further legal research from DOR, they determined that they couldn't do that until a legislative change was made. Having said that, in talking, uh, with the Cranberry Growers Association, we found out that Susan Gifford had sponsored a bill, uh, that in essence would do that. In addition to that, there was also some discussion where property is being forced to be taken out of sixty-one once a cranberry, and once a solar project goes up, to see if there was the ability of making that retroactive, so that they could put these back into chapter sixty-one, which would also need to be a provision tied into there. Um, in addition, there's also a similar bill on the senate side that is a little bit more comprehensive, and, and the reason why I don't have the bills identified down here is that I think it's more appropriate for the town to stand behind the idea of keeping active farmland, whether it has a solar cell or not have a solar cell, within chapter sixty-one, and therefore allowing the farmers to continue to grow it under that, that, that program that's there. So that's really what the recommendation here is, is that there are some bills there, but I think it's more appropriate for the board to, 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 to send a letter off to, to our state reps, and, uh, in support of cranberry growers actively keeping, actively farmed, uh, chapter land in chapter sixty-one, while having an active solar project on the grid. And again, right now, if it's for their own use, it's okay, but if they sell the electricity, which we're taxing under a pilot agreement, they can't keep it under chapter sixty-one.
So you're suggesting we remove the portion of the motion that might suggest we support a bill specifically that Susan Williams Gifford is sponsoring, and just embrace the spirit of, uh, that we, of the rest of the motion?
That's correct, and that's why, again, I didn't put the bill number down.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may, I wanted to just add, the reason it doesn't work right now is because the way the legislation is written, the farm, the grower can put solar on there, but they, it, they have to use all the electricity generated on their own properties. And I guess the legislature hasn't been to cranberry country in a long time. They don't realize that most of the growers use propane. So there's not a whole lot of electricity being used on the farm, maybe in the shop or something, but that's it, so.
And I think we have to recognize that solar has helped some of our growers.
Oh, yeah.
Survive through the hard times.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so that, and without changing the landscape and turning it into box stores or.
Correct. But I mean, that was, that was the issue, that it was, it was that they had to use that electricity on their own site. And once you have some guy from outside coming in and selling it, now they have to change the use of the chapter sixty-one A, so.
Because the legislation, as, as Sarah's mentioning, produce energy for the exclusive use of the land and the farm upon which it's located on. So you can't even sell a little bit of it off.
Correct.
You have to use it exclusively for that. And again, that's the flaw in the current legislation. DOR is, sees the merits in changing this, but they can't do it into the legislature acts.
Does someone wanna make a motion that we express our support for cranberry growers to keep actively farmed chapter land in sixty-one A while having active solar projects on the grid, and request the provision to have retroactive?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And that these would go in letters to our representatives?
And I think to the sen, our senator, too.
That's.
Oh, all representatives, yeah. I, I meant all our representatives.
Yeah, this and the prior one, yeah, both, both.
Alright, mo, motion and a, a second. Bob?
The only issue that I do have with this is that I wanna see what's being written, because there could be other things. So I mean, I understand the concept of it, and I support that, but I don't wanna turn around and say, oh, I'm gonna support any bill that has to deal with this.
Right, no, and, and this wouldn't, this is supporting the spirit, and then we'd obviously wanna see the individual bills before.
Right, and I would agree with that. If we're ever asked to support an individual bill, the bill should be noted here, so we can.
That's correct.
Yeah, absolutely.
All's we're doing is the concept right now. If a bill gets crafted this way, then you can vote on that, but this is to support our growers.
Alright, motion made and second. No further comments. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, alright, next.
Yes, update on grants. Um, last week, we had, our new generator, um, is up and running down at the North Carver Water District. We received a grant of fifty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, Stephen Cole was instrumental in putting this together. Jim Walsh has followed that up, along with Dave Segentoff, so that is now up and running. The North Carver Water District is now gonna move forward with, uh, selling, uh, the old, uh, uh, the old generator. They're estimating they're gonna get north of fifty thousand dollars for that, uh, of which they owe thirty to pay for the rest of the, um, the, uh, generator upgrades that's there. So again, that is actually really important, because the generator that was there was too large. And it, it goes back to the poor design of the whole North Carver Water District, not only from a financing issue, but also from an engineering standpoint, that the generator never properly worked, and when we had outages, it was problematic at best. So that's a good thing from a public safety standpoint. Second, um, we received a Community Compact, uh, Grant for Public Safety for Townwide Radio Systems. This is a grant, uh, that, um, I think, uh, I may have mentioned when the public safety team came in to talk about the radio system. This was put together by Chief Weston and his team, and the rest of the parties. Uh, we did receive a ninety-nine thousand dollar grant on that, so that will go into advancing our whole radio system, uh, townwide radio system.
Now, when that was proposed to us, we knew this grant was a possibility, but we, at the same time, move forward, recognize we might have to fund it ourselves.
Correct.
But now we're finding out that we have the grant and it won't have come out of the town Carvers.
That's correct, and it may help us move some of the other elements faster, that we'll put into the final numbers. Moving along, uh, the Green Communities Act, uh, has been approved by the town of Carver. We have received an allocation of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. That is being coordinated, uh, with Dave Segentoff to go through the list of priorities that need to be done, where we're gonna get our most benefit for upgrade. that need to be done, where we're going to get our most, uh, benefit for upgrading, uh, lights, like in this room, it still doesn't work, um, and/or boilers and other type of equipment in the town that, uh, will have a quick payback, uh, for using this grants for, um, um, utility and infrastructure upgrades. Uh, so that has moved forward. And then finally, our, uh, we did receive the first hundred thousand dollars from the development partners down for Route Forty-four Development, and that project is currently being overseen, uh, by, um, down in our planning department, uh, with both, uh, Jim and Kevin. And, uh, we're, they're out trying to solicit bids on the completing the design and permitting and engineering, uh, of that project. So that is moving along very well. So again, a very successful, um, couple of months we've had with securing grants for the town of Carver. Okay? Uh, moving along, uh, last night, um, the finance committee met and, um, they have met with all but one department, uh, the dire- uh, Operations and Maintenance Department. That's on the twenty-fourth. Uh, with that, uh, in each department head and group that's come down there, they've gone through each individual budget. Uh, all ten or eleven members questioned and, and, and got good explanations and details from all the department heads. The finance committee has voted all of the budgets for approval, uh, to the Board of Selectmen, uh, but for the O and M Department. Um, and again, that's going to be reviewed by the finance committee on the twenty-fourth. Uh, with that, we have a joint, uh, meeting with the finance committee scheduled for March third, uh, where they are going to present their findings to the Board of Selectmen for your review and approval to go forward to town meeting. From there, we talked about the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District. Um, update on the warrant for the annual town meeting and the town administrator's annual report. You have my town administrator's annual report in front of you and, uh, there might be some typos that need to be done in there. And also, there's, um, a warrant, uh, the warrant will be coming out in the next week or so that will give everybody a draft warrant, uh, for us to review at our next board meeting. Um, there's just been, you know, staff has been pulled in eighteen different directions, um, and we're just trying to put all of that, that package together. And then finally, uh, the last item on here is update on securing bids to design permit a waterline extension and secure construction bridge. Uh, this is obviously for Plymouth Street. Um, and as, uh, was briefly mentioned by Greg Corbo, um, staff has been directed, uh, to go out and get bids, uh, for, uh, securing a consultant to come in and design permit the waterline extension. Um, we hope to get a contractor on board and under contract in the next thirty to sixty days. Um, that's going to be for the engineering analysis. In addition to that, our LSP is reviewing to see what the potential extent of that waterline would be. Uh, we anticipate that whole process to be completed by the end of this calendar year. Uh, from there, uh, we would then go out to bid around the first of the year next year and get firm quotes, uh, not even quotes, actually firm bids, uh, from, uh, construction companies, and then we would bring that to town meeting, uh, to get funded at next year's annual town meeting. Uh, we're not sure what the cost of that's going to be. Um, a few years ago, we just had a back-of-the-envelope number of three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I anticipate that, um, this is probably going to be more in the neighborhood of four to five hundred thousand dollars, just given some additional analysis that we've had, um, since then. Uh, again, that will be, uh, moved forward as rapidly as possible. Um, and I think that this is, um, being done in an effort to focus on some additional emerging ca- contaminants that DEP is going to be forcing communities to explore and test for, um, sometime this spring, early summer. And so again, that is, uh, going to be moving forward and funding is available for that in our project.
You have a question, Sarah?
I, I do. I was just wondering, uh, Mr. Chair, if in the future we could put what street that refers to, uh, the, what, I mean, one, one assumes it's Plymouth, and you just said it's Plymouth Street, but it would be nice if that were actually on the agenda. Um, I think it's important to be very specific about things like that. We're not extending it all the way down Main Street, for example. I mean, it could have meant pretty much anywhere, so. Just a note.
Okay, you all set?
Let's extend my comments, yes.
All right, the minutes of January seventh and January twenty-first, what's the pleasure of the board for the minutes of January seventh?
I move we approve the minutes of January seventh meeting.
Second. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. What's the pleasure for the board for the minutes of January twenty-first?
I move we approve the minutes of January twenty-first.
Second.
Uh, please note that our next scheduled meeting would normally be next week, but because, if you want to blame me because I got sick, uh, for last week and combined with the fact that the warrant is not re- of going to be available by next Tuesday, our next meeting will actually be on the twenty-fifth, followed immediately, the following week, uh, by the third, I would like to make an effort, since we want, we, we wanted to try to have articles done, uh, a month ahead of time, just like the budget.
Mr. Chairman, did I miss a vote on the minutes?
Yeah, we didn't really vote.
Oh, did I miss the January twenty-first?
Yeah, I, I made a motion to approve it.
There was a motion.
Motion and a second, but a vote. It's late.
It's late.
We have to go start the GoFundMe page too, to get lights.
I know, seriously.
So, uh, all those in favor of approving the minutes of January twenty-first signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With the minutes, um, since we already approved the, um, the police chief, fire chief, and finance director's contract, I think that we can release, uh, the executive sessions with those, um, at the next meeting?
Um, I, I think the only thing we do there is just send them off to town council for review, and if they sign off on them, then they can be released. Yeah. That's fine. I mean, I think we do that all the time, just to make sure that there's nothing we're missing.
No, I just don't want to delete any.
Yeah.
We keep on it, we keep on it, we get it done and over.
All right, Mr. Dunham?
Yes, uh, just noticing on the minutes of January twenty-first, twenty twenty, it lists Sarah as absent.
I, no, I was here, I was down at the Board of Health meeting.
Okay.
I came in later.
Oh, all right, thank you. I just want to make sure.
She was absent.
Yep.
I did review those minutes, sir.
Okay. That's unusual. Usually you don't pay much attention to minutes.
You know me.
Uh, all right, uh, request for best buddy's bike ride through Carver on June sixth, twenty twenty, pleasure of the board.
I move we approve the request from best buddy's bike ride through Carver on June sixth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Further discussion?
Just got, did that get left off the agenda or?
Hmm?
It wasn't on, I could have sworn it was on a prior agenda, but.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. Um, motion made and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We will move to community announcements. Uh, Mr. Dunham?
Uh, the only thing I have is a reminder, it's, um, still available, uh, to go to the town clerk's office to pick up nomination papers. I would really, really hope we can get some people to go ahead and pull nomination papers for the school committee. I, to this point, I don't believe anybody has yet. We have two ter- two positions for a three-year term and also one position for a one-year term.
No, no, that's not the case.
Mr. O'Brien has changed his mind, he's going to serve out his last term.
He's going to serve out to the end of the ye- my understanding is, but what I, my understanding is, he's going to serve to the end of this year and then leave, and it will require an appointment to the board.
Okay, 'cause I was led to believe that it was.
I'm, I'm going by what the chair of the school committee posted.
Well, at any rate, there are positions, so.
There, there's, there are two.
There's at least two.
Mr. Chairman, all right, from what I researched out is that, um, if he goes ahead and says, yes, I'm going to leave now here, then it can be put on the, the next warrant article, I mean, next warrant, the next.
Town election.
Town election, okay? But the way he wrote it is till the end of his term, and thus, if he stays till the end of the term, then it doesn't give us a chance for it. So he has to make a decision if he wants to allow the voters to vote or if he wants to go ahead and let the selectmen vote.
Regardless, it's out of our hands.
It is out of our hands, no matter what.